What? Whoa. I would like to call the USD 305 School Board meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Under item 12B, I'd like to remove personnel that are no longer needed.
Okay. And thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as corrected or amended?
I so move.
Thank you.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So moves six zero. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations with Ms. Bradford Vernon, the You Make a Difference Award.
Good evening. The You Make a Difference Award is presented to staff members whose exemplary actions support students, colleagues, and the mission of the line of public schools. Recipients of these awards receive a lapel pin and a handwritten note personally delivered by a board of education member. Diana Pearson and Carol DeGara, Sunset Elementary, speech pair professionals. Diana and Carol have been instrumental in communicating with parents and staff during the transition to online speech therapy services. They are key to ensuring scheduling and the delivery of services. Thanks to their extra efforts, student speech therapy sessions are facilitated and the required technology resources are ready to go. Thank you, Diana and Carol, for making a difference during this transition. Thank you.
All right. Moving on in our recognitions and presentations with our bond update with Ms. Robson.
So it's been awhile since we've done a bond update because we've been improving project after project. So we decided to do an update this month. You can see the the green lines on our dashboard are moving across the moving across the screen. There's more detail on that. I'd be happy to answer questions on it. Of note, we have all projects short of our three support buildings that are under contract right now. Central High School will come December 8th. We'll have the first package for Central High and that'll be all of them. Any questions on the dashboard that I can answer? Okay, we'll jump right into the individual schools. Coronado is progressing very nicely. We are getting close to the point of building dry-in, which is good because we're getting close to the point of winter time. So roof roofing is going on, brick cladding is going on, and that project is progressing very nicely. Any specific questions on Coronado? Oakdale is is steady by jerks, as somebody once put it to me. They're in the process of finishing out the structural steel at this at this time. The storm shelter is up. They they don't have the the concrete roof on that yet, but work is progressing. Any specific questions on Oakdale?
And you did say the office is completely is finished now?
The office is finished. There are there's a handful of punch list items remaining. One of the major ones is the flooring in the teacher workroom area, and that'll be worked on over the the holiday break. There's also a couple of change order items that are happening in that office area as well.
Oh, one question in relation to this, as I look at it right now. It says abandoned and unmarked site utilities. Those did not cause the problem that we had, for example, at Husner? That kind of thing?
Um, the...
The the gravity of that challenge, which I think was significant.
I mean, it's it's oranges and apples. They're both they're both fruit. No, the what I would say is that Oakdale, we were digging, and then what the heck is that? And then we got to figure out what that is and deal with it. At Husner, it was here's we know where everything is and we got to move all of it. And most of that stuff requires the kiddos to not be in the school when you do that. And we had a really small window to get that done. But yes, it all relates to the things that people don't normally take for granted, that there's when they flush the toilet, stuff goes away. And they can plug things in and it works, so. Cottonwood, we got a lovely picture of the new parking lot here, and it's not finished yet. Work is progressing very well there. Most of the brick cladding is on the building. The brick matches perfectly. If you drive by and you didn't see any construction vehicles there, you'd think that that's been there the whole time. The parking lot has been a challenge, and we are but we are moving on with getting that finished up. So we had trees that had to be dealt with and a power pole that had to be moved and the trash companies. I think three different trash companies used the alley to pick trash up. And of course, the parking lot's part of that alley. And so deconflicting all that and to shut down the alley for a time to get that done has all that has been in the works. But we can see that the pad is in. They've started placing concrete at some of the approaches, and work is progressing. Any specific questions on Cottonwood?
They were laying asphalt when I drove by.
Okay. I should know that. But that's good.
And the sidewalk is done.
Okay, that's great. Asphalt, we're about ready. We're about at the point where they stop placing asphalt for the year. So that's good that we'll get that in. And that'll be a top coat or a a base coat of asphalt. The contractor will, at least the old plan was, the contractor would then use that parking lot for their their construction traffic. And then when they demobilize, they'll come in and put the top coat of asphalt in and stripe it and make it perfect, was the plan. Metal Arc also going well. They're finishing up brick on the the teeny little kindergarten addition. And then the the masons are are prepping to to start bricking in the the storm shelter. Renovations on the inside. We have the the EBD suite, and that's work is again, there's a handful of punch list items remaining there, but work is predominantly completed there. There's a special ed classroom inside the building that is also wrapped up. There's one change order bit of work that is is going to take place over the holidays, I believe.
What's EBD?
Emotional Behavior Disorder. Think you asked me that last time. I I got it.
Next time, maybe I'll remember.
Okay. Lakewood Middle School, hot off the press picture. When we do precast construction, tilt up construction, what happens is one day there's no building there and the next day the building's there. And that's kind of how Lakewood went. I think they had the precast panels up in in two days. So then there's obviously a whole lot more that has to go into that, but it it's good for morale, I guess, to have you show up and hey, there it is. So you can get a feel for the magnitude and size of that space by driving by and taking a look at it. Fairly simple relative to our other projects, fairly simple scope there. One one addition with some locker rooms. Most of the renovation work in the in the front office has been completed. I haven't looked at it myself, but the storefront has gone in and the resource officers' office, all that has kind of been put into place in the in the main entry. So if you get a chance, you can take a look at that and see what it'll be long term. Of note here, you know, the current contingency is a negative balance of just over $3,000. Where if you remember, this project came in over budget. You can see there, it came in over budget, number one. The the contingency allowance was based on a percentage, 3% of the construction budget. So the budget on this project wasn't wasn't huge to begin with. Where did the money go? The money went to differing site conditions in in the digging process is where most of that went. So we have a water line that we had to relocate. It was we had to pay a little extra money because that water line is part of the city's water line network, and so it needed to be constructed to the city's standards. So we'd had to do that. There's a sewer line that runs underneath the this this building, and that had to be replaced with a pipe that was that was appropriate for putting underneath a building. And then we had a handful of electrical conduits that had to be relocated. That's where that money went. So what the plan is, is we use any remaining, any contingency that we would need to use is by exception only at this point because we're all we're all out. So that'll that'll be a pretty deliberate decision to to go down that road and and spend spend more money here. I would say that there's there's no renovation left to do. That's that's 99% done. That's where you find things that you didn't know about and cost you extra money. And we're out of the ground at this point, which is another place that you find things that cost you extra money. So the risk here, I think, is low. I think we're in pretty good shape. Heartland is going well. We've got three additions going at Heartland, and they're all underway right now. So Heartland is kind of a mess. There's just stuff going on everywhere. The priority is going to the what we're calling the help addition. It's it's a one of two storm shelters plus the the help program classrooms that are going there. That's where the focus is. They're getting ready to start brick on that building. The roof is on or the the deck is on. We're waiting on roofing to go there. But I think that that project's going pretty well as far as managing the kiddos and the logistics of that facility with all the things that are going on is is has been a trick. And it's it's pretty much a daily effort to we get we get parents coming into the wrong coming into the construction site, trying to get in entrances that are no longer entrances, and it's it's we're trying to manage it. Any questions on Heartland that I can answer? Husner, all the utilities are relocated exhaustively. Couple hundred feet of new sewer pipe. We rerouted power. We rerouted AT&amp;T. We rerouted Cox. We rerouted gas. We rerouted water. So every utility that comes into that school, we had to reroute all of it. So that was a big risk that we, you know, when you start a project, when school in the summer, we would have said, we're going to do all that stuff over the summer. The timing didn't work out, and we had to pick a couple of in-service days to try to get all that to happen. And and we did that. What you're looking at is a photo of the building foundation and slab for the kindergarten addition, which is the first priority of this project. To the left of that picture is a is a small foundation and pad that are in right now for the autism expansion. And then they're moving moved on to the building pad for the storm shelter there. And we know where everything's at now.
Chris, just as a follow-up on that, you mentioned that the pad that is in place for the autism expansion, that's for the sentry room, correct?
Yes.
Because I believe if I understand correctly, that the autism room will relocate to what is an existing kindergarten classroom now, correct?
Yes.
I think that's correct because it's I think it's about twice the size, I believe.
Yes.
Which it's important because the numbers in that program have grown.
Yes.
By quite a number. And so it's going to be good to hear that we have a larger space for those kids.
And the basically the hallway that leads to the two, the kinder the new kindergarten pod is what we're calling it, although we're trying to not use the word pod anymore. That hallway goes right through both of those existing kindergarten rooms. And Husner had the best kindergarten rooms in the district. I've seen all of them. They were they got fireplaces in them, and they're just huge. So they're no more. But the hallway goes right through the middle of both of those kindergarten rooms, and so it splits that space up into about four other spaces that are that are used for these special programs. And those are well-designed spaces that are going to meet our needs. South Middle is going to be underway next week is when their their notice to proceed will be Monday next week. We'll start to see conversations about fencing, and fencing will start to go up, and we'll start to see movement there. And the a lot of the paperwork is starting to flow for long lead time items and the approval of submittals to get some of that stuff. The the gymnasium is a pre-engineered metal building. And so you have to design that and order it. And then there's there's six, eight weeks of waiting to get that thing to come in. So that we wanted to get that started immediately, that that process is started, so that when we show up with all the people and the materials that cost money, we'll we'll be ready to go for that. Any questions on South Middle? Stewart is what you're looking at. It's it's hard to tell, but that used to be a grass field. That's that's taken kind of in the median, but in Belmont, looking in. That is the building pad for the kindergarten addition that we're looking at. So you can see how it's kind of level with the rest of the building there. Any questions on Stewart? Schilling, this is a this is a little bit older picture. I think they have the building pads in now. Remember, Stewart Schilling's got one large addition that includes their multipurpose room and includes all the spaces that we needed to make all that program work in one addition, which is nice because it's on the east side of the building, kind of away from everything. So the contractor really, I think it reflected in the pricing that we got in, that it was logistically fairly easy to deal with site. Relocated electrical here, found a sewer line here that we didn't know we had, and then broke it, you know? So that's been taken care of, and I think we're going to we'll get that rerouted properly. But the addition here is going well. Any questions for Schilling? Sunset is was mobilizing this week. So fences will start going up this week. I haven't been by there to see whether those have gone up or not yet, but that's this is our our newest project, about ready to get going. Our two high schools, of course, we've South High, we've we've got the package one, the structural package guaranteed maximum price has been approved. We have a we now have a construction contract for South High. Mobilization here has already started. What we're working on now is site logistics. When we start cutting off parking lots and we we there's a quite a bit of coordination that needs to take place to get that resolved. We're we're working closely with the administrators at the school to get a good plan together and and get the materials together to to make the make the switch. Remember, the east wing is the first portion of this, and it'll cut right through the parking lot on the east side of the building, and that'll basically cut off the northeast part of the building and the yard and everything for the construct construction contractors a lay down area. Part two of the guaranteed maximum price for South High will come in January to the board, and that'll be the final package deal with the whole project. Central will have our package one guaranteed maximum price will come to December 8th board meeting. Work work at Central will scheduled to start after the new year. We are doing some things over the over the holiday break in anticipation of that. We're abating some asbestos-containing material. Contractor can't go in and work if there's asbestos in there. So we we have to get all that gone so they can work. We won't get all of it gone, but we'll get everything we need to have gone before the summer, get it moved out of there. In addition, the the front office is moving to the concourse area for a period of two years during construction. So we're working on laying that out and getting things constructed in the concourse area to support the administration of the building. And that'll, right now, hopefully, take place over the holidays, but we're we're it'll be tight. But I think we can do it. Any questions? Part two for Central will be February. So pretty much every month now, we're going to be wrapping up the high schools and kind of tying a bow on the on the cost of those projects.
Was that asbestos ceiling tile or?
In this case, we're what we're abating now is chalkboards, believe it or not.
Interesting.
They were made out of transite panels kind of back in the day. And so what we've done is they they're they're actually recessed into the wall. They actually laid up the brick there to receive these chalkboards. Very nice craftsmanship. They've never been removed because if you remove it, you got this weird recess in the wall, number one. Number two, you got to have specialists come in to get rid of them, and the school has to be empty to do it. So what we've done is is stuck what dry erase boards, glued them right on top of the chalkboards and have dry erase boards now, but they're still in there. And part of the project is going to be moving some of these walls, and we've got to tear all that stuff out. So we'll be tearing them out. We have a few pipe fitting joints left. I know the last bond issue was a big asbestos clearing operation for Central, and we got basically everything that was that was gettable at the time. What's remaining is there's some floor tile that have to come up. The scariest of those is in the woodshop area, where we've got all those thousands of pounds worth of tools that are bolted to the floor, and all that has to get moved out of the way to get the abatement to happen. That is going to happen over the summer, not over over the holiday break. We're just doing the chalkboards, 17 chalkboards over over Christmas break so that we can get have construction activities that can take place.
Then when all is done, do you think you'll have it all, out of all schools? All all asbestos will be gone?
Uh, no. There is one that I can remember now where we've we've got a basically a one I can't remember. Yeah, I can't even remember the school. I apologize. But we're getting most of it. We've got one school that I can remember that has skylights, and the paneling that they use to build that skylight is transite panels, the same material that these chalkboards are made out of. So to get rid of it, you have to basically punch a hole through the roof and redo re-roofing, and it's a pretty invasive deal to get rid of it. So the plan on that is when when that school comes up for a roof replacement as part of Mr. Norton's kind of roof replacement plan concept, we'll do it then because we're already going to be re-roofing. So if we punch a hole in the roof, we'll be ready to go and get it gone.
So as long as it's not disturbed, it's safe, correct?
Yes, yes. And these transite panels are are very, very safe, but they contain asbestos. And so we've kind of made it a mission to get as much of this stuff gone as we can. I think we'll have 99% of it of the things that we know about, we'll have that gone.
Yeah, I think and Mike, I think your department's been working really over the past year or so, getting as much of that out as possible, correct? In in advance of construction.
Yeah, we have we'll have asbestos left in this building, small amounts. We'll have the flues in Stewart that are inside the walls that would really require a lot of demolition just to get to them. They're 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 not exposed. You you can't get to them. Those will be left.
Heartland?
Heartland is where the skylight is. And Sunset has some pipe fittings that are buried in the walls behind cabinets, and it would can play take a complete remodel of of those rooms to even get to that asbestos. So those those are the four locations we have left.
Do we take extra precautions with our staff relative to asbestos removal? And I realize you said that some of that was safe, but...
Precautions as...
Well, as in for health reasons. I remember when the asbestos was removed from South High, that was a pretty extensive project, and every the people were wearing masks and, you know, walling off.
Whenever we've had abatement, of course, we followed the the abatement procedures, and and they put up barriers. Interesting, we can't have anybody under 18 in a building during any time. There are certain types of abatement where you can have adults there, even though we try not to do that. But most of most of what's remaining is non-friable, and we don't want to get into that difference. But non-friable or friables, when the fibers are exposed in the air. Transite, we actually have water lines around in some of our places that are actually made of transite that our water's flowing through. So it's it's fair it's very safe. It doesn't the fibers are contained. Only happen only time you make it friable is you could crush it, which we're trying to avoid.
We're meeting... We're meeting, our bond office and the schools are meeting every other week at all of our projects that are in construction now. So you can imagine towards the tail end here, it's been tricky to schedule that stuff. This is just like lots of meetings. At any rate, this is the meeting schedule. If anybody would like to sit down on any of those, you're more than welcome to. And that's a chance for the architect to administer the construction contract. It's a chance for the contractor to, and the architect to engage with the building principal and building administrators and talk logistics and schedule and, and the kind of, this is the, the meetings that kind of keep the project moving along.
And the location of those meetings?
They are at the, each of the facilities. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Just, just a couple, Chris. First of all, as you're going, as you were going through that, I was paying particularly, particular attention to the elementary schools and the timeline for completion on those. And at this point, at this point, it appears that we will have four for sure completed before the start of school next year. A good possibility, possibly six.
Yep.
And probably not any more than that, but I noticed even Stewart and Sunset have a September, October completion date. So we could be into all of our elementary schools either by the time school starts or shortly thereafter in terms of the new additions.
That's the goal.
Okay.
The goal is to, is to start all day K and not have all day K somewhere that it's not gonna be in the, the next year. And we don't have, and on our tail end, the last four projects, we don't have contract language that supports, that forces the contractor to be done in time. But we have talked to them and said our, that's why our priority's always been the kindergarten addition. That's the first thing that you'll see work on. Because they're well aware of, get, if we can get that done and get all day kindergarten happening in the new facility, that's what we're trying to get to for seventeen eighteen.
And, and I do, I am aware of the fact that in Stewart and Sunset, we already have contingencies in the event that it's not completed, which more than likely will not be. But the other thing to keep in mind is from a funding standpoint, we do have one year of new facilities waiting for all projects that are completed and, and we have students who are in attendance in those new facilities. I, I, I would imagine Lisa, they're still using September twentieth as the, as the date on that. So it's a very good possibility that that will generate more revenue for the district. Obviously, the sooner we get those projects completed. So there's another incentive, you know, to, to have those projects done even ahead of its schedule if at all possible. And Chris is, and his department's fully aware of that. So I appreciate that. The last item, just for, just for the board's information, because this is something that may come to the board in the future. I'm not sure if it's gonna be the near future or the distant future, but it may come. And that has to do with the modular classrooms at, at Central. And I guess I'm using the term modular kind of loosely.
Right.
Bit. Okay. And one of those is the help program and which will be relocating to Heartland. I believe the, one of them is, I believe the debate, is the film forensics and the other one's debate. And, and one of them is directly south of the auditorium, which probably will be impacted sooner than the other areas.
Correct.
But walk the board through a little bit in terms of your plans possibly for those modular classrooms.
The original plan was get rid of all the modulators in the district. Long-term, I think that's still the plan. We remember the, the cottage at Husner went, went bye-bye. So the plan was, we're gonna, let's figure out how to get rid of these, these, at the time, we thought they were, when I think of the word modular, I think of a, a unit that you can put an axle on and it has a VIN number and it has a title and you sell it. It's like a mobile home. And they, you put two of them, bolt them together and you got a building. I don't think that's necessarily the case at the modulators that we have right now. So that's one component of this. The reason I say that is we're investigating what, how to dispose of them. Do we auction them? Do we sell them? Do we just tear them down? What's the best thing to do for the district? So in the middle of trying to figure that out, we're, we're getting closer and closer to a legitimate phased logistics plan for the construction at Central. And it's got, it's got Shannon Rector probably spending a lot of sleepless nights thinking about who moves where and there's, there's fifteen phases. The last time, like, it keeps getting more and more phases of construction and that each one of those phases is we're moving this population of students and teachers from this spot to that spot. So the bottom line is, is that we've, we have a phased construction plan right now that, that has no room for error. And errors are going to happen. It's just inherent to the construction process. So it would be really the prudent thing to do to deal with that risk somehow. What we've looked at, initially I thought, you know, we've got these modulators. Let's, why don't we hang on to them a little bit longer because we might need a classroom or two to help us get through some problems. So what we're investigating now is what's it gonna cost to relocate these things? Because they're right in the way of construction right now, all of them. What's it gonna cost to relocate them on the site and use them? My guess is that that's gonna be cost prohibitive to do that because those are, those are, those buildings are sitting on permanent foundations, basically. So you have to kind of build half of a building and then set this new building on top of it. The second piece of that is, I don't believe there, I don't believe you unzip the zipper and then take, take two pieces and put them, move them, put them back together. I think those buildings showed up partially built, like the floor section was there and all the wall sections were kind of stacked on top of it and you kind of pull all the pieces apart and bolt them all together. So that's not really one that you can like trailer down the road and not easily moved. Late, the, I guess, the, we still don't know exactly what we're gonna do with the modulators. They will go away at some point. We'll, we'll be, we'll be wanting to come back and talk to the board about what, you know, authorizing us to kind of figure out, are we gonna sell them? Are we gonna tear them down? What are we gonna do? And then the figuring out this contingency, if you will, for a, a phase that doesn't finish on time. And now we've got two or three classes that need a home. And we've talked about going across the street perhaps, and there's some other things that we're looking at as far as what financially makes sense and logistically makes sense there.
That would be Smokey Hill, not Little Caesar's. We're kind of thinking of that as a possibility. So, you know, you never know. We haven't had those conversations yet, but that's, you never know. I think it's, contingencies are important with the, the complexity of that particular, of that particular construction project. So it's, it's just gonna be a lot of movement, a lot of moving parts. So.
Right.
There may be, at some point in time, we'll come back to the board with a proposal to, to, as Chris said, authorize administration to dispose and or sell of those particular pieces of property. And, and as best we see fit, I guess. I mean, we've had that precedent in the past with other modulators that we've had and we came to the board and received authorization to either dispose of and or sell them. Depending upon what the best situation was. I think the other ones that we sold, it's been a while back. I'd looked at some records. I think they're about five or six thousand a piece. I didn't get a lot out of them. You know, there wasn't, there wasn't a lot. There's not a huge investment there, I guess, is what I'm saying. But we kind of thought we could utilize them if at all possible just to get us through construction, but that may not be possible. It may be, it may be cost prohibitive to do that, quite honestly. So. You know, I thought, I thought it'd be good for Chris to at least share that in the event that we do come back to you, kind of know where, what the history of, of that is. So.
That would be in terms of not only just setting the building, but also because of providing the utilities that would be necessary to
Yes.
Have them be functional.
Yes. And you, you, I've got experience at, at Fort Riley with modular. When the Army decided to move the first infantry division from Germany back to the States, moved it back to Fort Riley, they set a, kind of an unrealistic timeline. And so we ended up with, with like six hundred modular. We were doing, we did two projects and in total, there was about six hundred of these things that we were shipping in and setting up. They, my experience is, is the, you pay a lot of money in the utilities and getting them set up. And so the tendency is if you pay a little bit more money, you get a more permanent solution. You get kind of real foundations and real utilities. Well, and then you've, you've invested all this and then now what was once a temporary building with a lifespan lives on forever and ever and ever. And then it's kind of like, man, we just really need to get rid of those. It's just really hard to do. So I would be an advocate for something that doesn't require us to lease or buy something. That would be nice. If it's just space that we're renting, that, that would be good because that, that goes away and that's easy. Because once you start putting foundations and utilities and everything in, it's, and next thing you know, it doesn't go away. We just can't get rid of it. And then we've got a brand new construction project and then some trailers sitting out there. And I guarantee you, they won't go in, they won't go in awesome spots on the site. You know what I mean? They'll go and, because it's, it's, it would be temporary and it would be for a purpose and it would have a life, you know, it would, they would go away eventually. So those are the things that we're, we're kind of wrestling with right now. The good news is, I think, the year, the first year of construction through the summer at Central High is pretty, doesn't impact logistics of the school all that much. Outside it does with traffic patterns, et cetera. But actual classroom spaces, I think, is a little bit easier to deal with. So we don't have to figure it out right away, but I'm trying to get on it because it's, it appears to be kind of a complicated topic.
So are, are we talking two school years approximately then for Central for students to be moved around in classrooms? To move?
Yes.
In stages?
Yes.
Okay.
Their completion date right now is January eighteen. So that's, if they begin, it's about two years.
Two years, okay.
But it's, it's mid-year. It's not full, you know, it's partial years.
Right.
And then South High is the, that following summer, summer of eighteen, when it's supposed to be done.
Okay.
It will be a unique, we, we, we did, we brought the design development to the board and we, we had the virtual reality and did that for Central. We did that at Central High this morning.
Okay.
So their design team got a chance to look at carpet and finishes and do the virtual reality thing. And then we set up in the, in the cafeteria and had the, had the kids as they were going through their lunch hour, or lunch minute, I guess. Come through and look at it. And, and it, it was interesting because the, the differences between the two high schools is diff, is interesting to me, that this is a different culture and how, how it is. But we concluded that they just don't know what they don't know right now. They can't imagine how new and amazing it's gonna be. They're just, it's distant from them. And they can't imagine also that, kind of the turmoil. It, it's gonna be a unique, you know, for the freshmen, it'll be a very unique high school experience. They'll see the whole thing kind of built before their eyes while they were there. Be pretty neat.
Any other comments before we move on? Thank you. All right, moving on to the approval of our consent agenda items, beginning with the minutes of the October thirteenth, twenty fifteen regular meeting. Our personnel reports, our financial reports, which include the October bills list and our October bond bills list, September treasures report, the September investment report, September journal entries, and our bond budget summary for October. Our professional development, which includes individual development plans and college credit and district staff development plans. We are approving the self-supporting floor mounted room partition in the amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to Western Fireproofing Company of Kansas for the Hagaman Education Center. We're also approving Husner Elementary Sewer Replacement Change Order to Systems Four in the amount of twenty-five thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars. And we are approving Heartland Davis Bacon Wages Change Order in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty-four dollars to Poton Construction Company. Can I get a motion to approve these?
Madam President, I move approval of the consent agenda items as listed.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move six zero. Moving on in our agenda to our public forum, if anybody would like to address the board now is your opportunity. Seeing nobody trying to fight for the podium, we will move on to our action agenda item, beginning with Ms. Montoy and the South High BPA National Conference Out of State Field Trip.
Can I just read this?
Okay.
My name is Mrs. Montoy. This is Mrs. Nolton. And we are, I conter into helping me sponsor the BPA, which stands for Business Professionals of America group this year. I helped with it for about ten years. And then I took a, about a three-year break and the sponsor from last year resigned and so there wasn't going to be BP, be BPA. And so I conter into helping me because it's a really good thing for the kids and I didn't want to see it go away. So I'll just read this. South High School requests approval for an out-of-state field trip for students who qualify for the Business Professionals of America BPA National Conference. Students will qualify for Nationals by competing in the state competition to be held in Wichita, Kansas in February. The conference is scheduled for May five through May nine, two thousand sixteen in Boston, Massachusetts. The total cost of the conference is unknown at this time. However, it is estimated that the cost per student will be somewhere around six hundred dollars. It totally depends on how many go. The students will be responsible for funding and will participate in fundraisers, including working at concessions. The group will travel by air and ground transport. The students will miss three days of school and will be required to meet with their instructors prior to leaving to make arrangements.
All right. Any questions?
Have you done this before and how many people went?
And we've done it probably twelve to fourteen years. And it just varies. Last year, last year eighteen students were enrolled, fifteen went to state. And five went to Nationals, six qualified, but last year, the last day was on graduation. So one chose not to, my mom said no. This year we have thirty-two enrolled. So we've almost doubled the enrollment. I'm not sure how many will actually go to state.
Any additional questions or I'll take a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve South High BPA trip to Boston, Mass. On May five through May nine, twenty sixteen is presented.
All right, I have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our policy review with Mr. Hall and our second reading of our school board policies.
Yes, Madam President. And in your packet, each of you have a listing of all the, the changes to the, the board policies that were presented to you at last month's meeting. As it shares, as it says in the packet, it is being presented to you on second reading. General Counsel Wright presented this information to you at our last Board of Education meeting. So unless there are any questions or, or changes, I would recommend to the board that you approve the, those policies as presented on second reading.
Anne?
Madam President, I move that we accept or that we approve the fire, the, I've forgotten what I call it, the change in policies that's been presented to us.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move six zero. Moving on to our five-year capital improvement plan with Mr. Nolton.
Last month, I came before you and presented the five-year capital improvement plan. If there are any questions, I can answer those. If not, I recommend we, we approve that plan and we'll get started on projects.
I think Carol has a couple.
Yeah, thanks. And, and I'm sorry I didn't get these out earlier. I was interested in the sheds just in terms of, of cost and, and in terms of the variance. They range from eight thousand dollars to a nineteen thousand dollar shed at Stewart.
Some of those had to do with the foundation that goes in or the slab that goes underneath them. In some cases, the bond project will, will be pouring the slab for us, so we only have to build the shed. In other cases, we have to do both the, the foundation and the shed. So that constitutes the difference in price.
Okay. Again, a price difference. This was for the mowers, which apparently, at least from the description, were all the same mower, a sixty-inch something or another.
Right.
With attachments, but one of them ended up being nineteen, no, thirty thousand dollars. Most of them were nineteen, listed as nineteen thousand. And then this identical one, at least from its appearance here, was thirty thousand dollars at Sunset. And I wondered why the difference in the cost.
I think it had to do with the attachments that we're getting for that. I would have to go back and check.
Okay. Is the walking trail at Cottonwood? Okay. Is the walking trail at Cottonwood the last one that we have?
Yes, it is. And I'm working with David and we're, we're looking for, yeah, I think there'll be an opportunity to, to apply for another grant here coming up this spring.
And just a quick question about the water mains replacement at Central and South. Could you elaborate on that just a little bit?
The, the water line, we have, we've had serious problems with the water lines at both those facilities. In fact, we just had another major leak a week and a half ago at Central. The bond project will be, we'll have to relocate and put in a new water line from, from Magnolia. It's kind of a loop that goes around the building. About half of that loop's going to be replaced because of, of the construction. And while they're doing that, it's of the same age, it's of the same vintage, and it has the same problems with leaks. So we, we're going to try to leverage with the bond and just replace that whole loop. Central is much the same way. It's, it's very, we have leaks very consistently. One of the advantages of replacing the water line with plastic over what it is now, which I mentioned earlier, is, is a transite material, is that the city will take over maintenance of, of the, that line and the fire hydrants that are attached to it. So there's an advantage that the city will begin to maintain that if we, if we will replace it. It got to be pretty costly for them. And when they started having a lot of leaks, they said, you're on your own.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, any other questions, comments, or I'll take a motion? Somebody, anybody, one of you.
I move that the five-year plan be approved. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on in our action agenda item to our, our, excuse me, our board team negotiation discussion with certified personnel with Ms. Nancy.
Good evening. It's that time of year again already to talk about negotiations. We'd like to change the Board of Education team or the way we do our team just a little bit. We'll still have the input from representatives from different administration groups. But when you actually go into the negotiations table, a core team, myself, Executive Director of Business, General Counsel, and two board members would actually go to the table. And with that, we would also need to know which two board members would be on our team this year.
So you're.
Madam President, I move that we appoint Nadra Elbel and Johna Vosler to be the board members on the team too, for discussion with certified personnel.
Okay. I have a motion for that. Do we need to approve the, is that approving both the board team and the board personnel, or do we need to do those separate?
Two, two separate motions.
Okay. So the one I have is just for our board team. Do I, do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on that before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move six, six zero. So then we need another motion for, to approve the entire makeup of that board then. Okay.
I move that we approve the board, the complete board team for negotiations discussion with certified personnel as presented.
Okay, I have a motion and I'll
Second.
Second. Any additional discussion on this before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move six zero. I would say thank you, but we've got one more with you.
Yes, we do.
Board team for meet and confer with classified personnel.
Yes, this isn't actually negotiations, but we do yearly like to sit down with representatives from the various classified groups of our employees to maintain our communication with them. And we'd like two board members to join us on that meet and confer.
Okay.
Madam President, I move that the board team consists of Ann Zimmerman and Brett Cooper, that they meet and confer with classified personnel as presented.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion on that before we vote? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move six zero. Do we need to have another one for the entire, or just?
Yeah, go, you did the, yeah, just do the same one you did.
Okay. So then
The parallel.
Do you want to do the, for the entire board, Nadra?
I can. I saw move.
Okay.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the board team then? Seeing none, all those in favor for that, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move six zero on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to our discussion agenda item, which we have none. So we will move on to our school board committee reports and upcoming dates of importance, which begin this Thursday, November twelfth, with our S H E S C legislative luncheon at ten AM. Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, at Central High School, we'll have their groundbreaking at ten AM. And December fourth through the sixth is the KASB Annual Convention in Wichita. Thursday, December tenth is the DCP Diploma Completion Program graduation at Salina West at four. I think that's it. So Anne, do you want to start us off with our board committee reports?
Sure. I attended the Heartland Policy Council. And let's see, I think the major event there was that they talked about the social and emotional component that they have focused on in the first couple of months of the year, putting, setting aside some of the cognitive learning to focus especially on the social emotional parts for the little kids. And it's made a big difference in the school. And all the parents, as we went around the table, all of them said that it made a difference in the kids at home and how well they're able to control their emotions and recognize them. So it would seem like a really great thing.
I have nothing to report.
I attended KASB, Kansas Association of School Boards Legislative Meeting all day Saturday. Was there at nine and didn't leave until three. I had a lovely day getting acquainted with more people on the legislature. And we will present, be presenting the weekend in December.
I attended, I attended the Salina Ed Foundation Executive Board meeting and they are super excited about their three oh five live, which will be held at the Stiefel, I believe, this year. So that'll be exciting, I'm sorry, May of sixteen, so technically next year. So be watching your calendars for that date. Carol?
I attended the Salina Adult Education Center Partners for Success graduation on October twenty-third. On October twenty-first, the CKCIE Board of Control and a report out of that, there's a newly formed executive committee, which is going to be reviewing the current constitution. The last time that was reviewed was in two thousand and eleven. Erin Wright is going to be our representative on that committee. Number of training sessions have been going on. One of the things that people have to be trained in is reviewing IEPs because the state has certain regulations and we want to make certain that IEPs are written accurately. So teachers have been trained in that. Additionally, there was a case law meeting attended by fifty-three CKCIE principals and also a meeting with private and parochial school representatives, as is required by federal law. Staffing shortages include, among others, speech language pathologists, always a shortage. Currently, there is an online program that is serving a hundred and forty-seven students. It appears to be effective, but Mike did report that it was costly. A task force has been established for evaluating the current delivery system or systems for gifted education in our districts and determining what the needs are there. Project Search at the hospital is fully enrolled this year with twelve attendees. And the Salina Educational Foundation and Salina Regional Health Center have provided a grant of two thousand fifty-three dollars to replace worn-out audiology equipment. Also a vision screener, which is especially useful with small children. So thanks to SEF and, and Salina Regional for those contributions to the program.
Interesting. All right, Mary Anne?
Yes, I attended the Sunset and the South High groundbreakings. Was most impressed with both. I had my sister from, visiting from Connecticut with me at the Sunset Groundbreaking. And she was really impressed with what she was seeing and with Kansas schools and the administration and their inter, interaction with the children.
All right, our superintendent's report?
Yes, Madam President. A few items to report. On Friday was an extremely important day when it comes to the, the state of funding in Kansas. We had the Gannon hearings and the Supreme Court listened to arguments from both the state of Kansas as well as the, the folks representing Gannon, who represents, I believe, four different school districts bringing in the lawsuit. This particular hearing was based on the equity portion of that lawsuit. Essentially, that's the one that will impact the dollars that were ordered for the legislature to put in to equalize capital outlay as well as local option budget. At this point in time, it was kind of interesting. Lisa Peters had the opportunity to sit in on that, on those hearings in Topeka. The bottom line is that what's at stake at this point, it, it, it's the smaller portion of the two arguments. There's, there's an arg, a conversation to be had on equity, which is what this was about. And then we have a second portion of this is on, which is on adequacy, which comes down to, you know, what, what is the cost for educating a child in Kansas based on the, the Rose Principles, the Rose Standards? That particular conversation will not happen until later next spring. This particular one is a smaller portion. At stake is possibly anywhere from fifty to a hundred million dollars. That could be ordered to the state legislature to, to be distributed back to school districts to satisfy that. One issue that's interesting that came up out of this is an issue of, of non-severability with Senate Bill Seven. And as I understand it, the, what the justices are tackling or struggling with or trying to decide for now is if, in fact, they determine that this one portion of Senate Bill Seven is unconstitutional, does that in effect then make the entire Senate Bill Seven, which is the block grant, unconstitutional as well? Which if it does, then we currently really have no school funding mechanism at this point in time, which means, I guess, I guess schools close. I'm not completely sure what happens at that point in time. And so that, that's a conversation that, that they're struggling with at this point in time and, and in terms of where to go with that. The other issue is if they do order those dollars, that the legislature provide those dollars to Kansas school districts, then how will those dollars be accounted for in the middle of a fiscal year? And, and I would imagine that they would allow districts to incorporate those dollars, carry those over to next year. The capital outlay is not as big a deal. You just put that in your capital outlay. If an LOB is a bigger situation because it impacts mill levy. And so what does that look like? You know, and how, how would we be allowed to, to do that? So obviously, there's much that still needs to occur before that decision takes place. Now they're in the process of writing that decision, developing a decision timeline. Hopeful that we'll have a decision on this piece before the start of the next legislative session, early January. The adequacy, which is the larger piece, which is a three to four hundred million dollar piece, could be, the hearing won't be until the spring. Decision may be a year from now. And so we're further out for that particular piece. So now, I, I don't need to tell you all that the state budget situation isn't getting any better. Consensual revenue estimate came in, estimate came in on, on Friday again, and it's, it's off again. At this point in time, the governor's forced to make another a hundred and eighteen point two million dollars in adjustments to be able to leave an ending balance this year of five point six million, which is well under what the statutory requirement is. And at this point, there's no more room to maneuver. And that, and that's for FY sixteen. They're still estimating a hundred and seventy-five million dollar shortfall for FY seventeen. And, and so, you know, the budget situation for Kansas moving forward doesn't look good. We're not seeing any, any change in the trend of, of declining revenues. And so another, another, I guess, round of calls to the governor and the legislature to roll back those income tax reductions from three years ago. So, you know, we'll see what happens. It, it again will make, it, it sounds like round whatever of the next legislative session. I don't think it's going to be anything new. It's going to be a similar conversation to what we had in the last legislative session. State budget issues, as I share, as they continue. On the flip side of that, we have bond construction projects positive here continuing to move forward. Appreciate Mr. Upton sharing his information. We have eleven, what I would consider to be eleven active projects, eleven bids that have been approved by the Board of Education. Some interesting data, thirty-seven percent of all of our subcontractors are Salina subcontractors. And forty-one percent of all of our subcontractors are located in Saline County. And so, again, this goes back to the board's commitment to ensure that we keep as many of these dollars local as possible and that we, we keep our local folks working and, and building these projects. And so I think we've done a very good job. We'll continue to do so in terms of, of emphasizing local involvement. Appreciate your comments on the, on the South High and the Sunset Groundbreaking. The next one, and you already shared, is, is at Central, November twenty-fourth. And so we're looking forward to, to, that will be the last of our groundbreakings. And then we'll be transitioning to ribbon cuttings, I think. So soon, very soon. Isn't that right, Mr. Upton? Okay, and you don't want to say? Yeah, there, there's a lot of stuff that happens in between. All-day kindergarten is moving forward. All of our, our kindergarten teachers for next year have now been identified and, and they've been offered contracts. And so we have a full contingent of kindergarten teachers for next year. Some of those are transfers, some of those were not. As a result of the transfers now, we're working toward filling those other positions for next year that were vacated as a result of filling the kindergarten positions. Training will be provided for this spring for all of our newly hired kindergarten teachers. And so it's exciting as we, as we move forward. Now, along those same lines, I need to put a plug in for South High School's production this week. It starts on Thursday. And it's all I really needed to know I learned in kindergarten. So I thought that would, that would be very appropriate. And I believe they have a present, a, the first performance is Thursday evening at seven. And then I believe they have a matinee at two o'clock on Saturday. And they have a, another performance at seven PM on Saturday. And so not a Friday performance this time. So I just thought, yeah, that's kind of interesting. I wonder if they selected it just because of the fact that we're, maybe not, I don't know. Shout out to the South High School soccer team. They're state champions and had an opportunity to attend that. And that was an unbelievably exciting soccer match. And when you score the, the tying goal with twenty-nine seconds left in regulation and, and it was just, it was really, it was really a fun experience. So congratulations to the South High School soccer, soccer team for, for their season, their fine season. So completing a tour of site councils, Executive Director Business, Lisa Peters. And we're, we're down, I think, two more, right? South and Central, three more.
Lakewood.
Yeah, Lakewood yet. Okay, so we're, we're about ready to wrap those up. And then we're also having some parent meetings. Each of the principals are having parent meetings on to discuss state assessment results. And so on occasion, I tried to attend some of those as well. And then one last item is the community survey. Is the, the window for the community survey, the online community survey closes. We extended that for another week because we want to get as, as much feedback as possible. It will close at midnight on Friday, this Friday. Not that you have to push it to the midnight window, but I would ask as many folks out there, you can get the, the links on our website, just go to our website, log on. It takes five minutes to, to complete it. And, and we really would like to hear from as many folks as possible. So I encourage as, as many folks as can to go to our website and, and complete that survey for us. And we're hopeful, I believe, we'll have results for the Board of Education at the December board meeting. So we'll be able to share some information for the board.
Turn around.
Yes, indeed. And that's all I have.
Okay, and we have need for an attorney-client executive session?
Yes, Madam President, if I could request an executive session for attorney-client for twenty minutes, please.
Okay, I would be open to that kind of motion.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at six fifteen for twenty minutes for the purpose of consultation with board legal counsel on matters which are privileged in the attorney-client relationship, which if discussed in open session would waive that privilege, and that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at six thirty-five in the conference room.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. So move six zero. Thank you.